Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. The first item on the agenda is public comment, and I'm going to ask Mr. Stephen Frail to please come up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen Frail, 29 Powers Street. I know this is a, a lot of people are here for something, so I'll keep this very quick. I don't want to be in the, in the way of, of important items, but congratulations on your reelection and Dowd, congratulations as well. I have just a very brief comment. I'm here wearing two hats today, myself as a taxpayer, as well as a town meeting member. In reviewing the town warrant, which we'll be voting on later this spring, I came across the general fund core fleet replacement plan, and I noted that there are five units that are currently sedans for the building inspector. They're Ford Focus, Ford Fusions, in need of replacement. And I noted that the replacement that is specified in the warrant is an SUV, SUV hybrid, specifically at about $49,400. And I wanted to, as a taxpayer and also as somebody who's a member of the Climate Action Plan Committee, ask whether or not the town has considered replacing those with electric vehicles. Knowing that climate change is an urgent issue for us and that we have an opportunity here to take five fossil fuel generating, fossil fuel burning vehicles off the road and replace them with green vehicles. Is that something that's an option? As opposed to moving in the other direction is SUV, even if it is a hybrid. And the other piece that I just wanted to share with the town is I took a look at some of the hybrid SUVs out there, and I took a look at some of the electric vehicles out there. And it turns out because of federal and state rebates, one could get an electric vehicle for 10, 15, or $20,000 below the $49,000 that's, that's listed here. So the ability to go green and potentially even save $20,000, excuse me, $20,000 a vehicle seems like something that the town should be considering. And then lastly, the five-year cost of ownership of those electric vehicles is also on average lower than the hybrids where you have to potentially maintain both a combustion engine as well as a battery system. So I just wanted to make that comment and see if the town, you don't need to respond right now, but if the town could consider that as something in advance of town meeting, potentially even to make a change before town meeting would be wonderful, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have to find out. All right, the first item, the, the first official item on the agenda is the Select Board reorganization. And I think our town clerk here is here first to swear in members. So if you could please join us, let's see.
I think you need us to rise. So returning member to stand, if you please raise your right hand. And after I say, I repeat your name and then repeat after me, please. Wrong hand, I'm sorry, long night last night.
Thank you, Teddy.
I.
I. Mary Ann Cooley.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me as a Select Board member for the town of Needham.
All the duties incumbent on me as Select Board member for the town of Needham.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
And the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
Of the town of Needham.
Of the town of Needham.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You are so sworn.
Thank you. So I'm just going to note for just a second that this is momentous, right? It is remarkable. And for the first time in our 313th year as a town, we are governed by a board that is a majority of women.
And to give you the required material.
Oh, all right.
Don't get away with this. Standard of Conduct, Conflict of Interest, and the online training. It is new, it is now conducted by, on the State Ethics Commission officially instead of in my office all the time.
All right.
So best wishes, thank you, and congratulations to you both.
Thank you, and I'm going to thank our colleagues Marcus and Kevin for joining us all collectively in this journey that we're on. And thanks to all of you and the voters of Needham. All right, the, the next item is I'd like to call for nominations for Chair.
I will nominate Marcus Nelson for Chair.
And a second?
Second.
Yes, so when I started this journey and starting last year as a Vice Chair, I had every intent of being the Chair this year. Over the last year, I've had some unforeseen personal and professional things kind of change and that I'm still in full transfer dealing, dealing with and going through. And I think it would be a disservice for me knowing that I don't think I'd be able to give as much time as I would like to, to the Chair position. And I know how valued it is and how important it is to serve as Chair this year, so I will respectfully decline the Chair.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there other nominations for Chair?
I would nominate Mary Ann Cooley for Chair.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
Yeah. I have something to say. I, I feel, you know, as we're, you know, bringing on a new board member and as we have Mary Ann here, you know, for the next three years, her service and her leadership is something that is valued. And under the circumstances, I think it's the right fit to continue on to have Mary Ann Cooley as our Chair.
Thank you, Marcus. Yes, Madam Chair, should you continue? I think that we're all very appreciative of your service because this, you know, is a change. But given the short tenure of the rest of us, we appreciate it very much and count on your expertise.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Yeah, we count on your wisdom, so please apply it.
I will do my best. Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Here we go again, Needham. Thank you.
You have to get out of your seat.
Finish everything first, so we all have someplace to go. The next order of business is nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Kevin Keane as Vice Chair for the Select Board this upcoming year.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Coming into the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for stepping up. The next nomination is for Clerk.
I would like to nominate Heidi Fail as Clerk for the Select Board for the upcoming year.
Second.
Any discussion? Coming into the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, Ms. Frail. All right, now we will rotate chairs. Musical seats, Kate has, Kate has written directions in case any of us get lost. I'm going to pass it down. You're going to go behind me, okay? This member. The silliest thing we do all day. I know, it is. It's a whole different room from over here. Absolutely. Heidi, can you see outside? New news. Yes. All right, everybody, we're supposed to look this way. My distance. Look this way. We were taking a picture. Did you get one, Denise?
That is true, always.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Mary Ann. This on, all right, the board has one, thank you. This is a gift from the board for all your service over the last 365 days. Thank you.
Only the last 365 days.
You're being very technical.
Uh huh, oh my goodness. This, this is a golf scorecard notebook, so we can hope that I have time to play more golf. Inside, under there, there's an inscription, inside, under the paper. At the, under the paper. So just in case, I will tell everybody what it says. It says, "There are possibilities here." Now, that is a famous line to this board because in a very difficult situation, the one positive comment that a neighbor actually gave related to the Foster problem was there are possibilities here. And I continue to believe that there are possibilities at Foster, and I remain optimistic that it's going to happen. So, thank you, thank you all. Um, all right, on our agenda, a public hearing. Believe it or not, we have some pedestrian things, just an ever-source grant of location. And Ms. Calendar, I believe, is joining us. So the kids are here for the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, for the plastic bags. So as soon as we can get there, that's.
Okay, got it.
They are six. Ms. Calendar, Joanne, are you there?
I'm here.
Sorry, we're having a busy night tonight to get started, but you are here on a couple of grant of locations?
Yes.
So if we could talk about Forest Street first?
Yes, they both are actually Forest Streets. So the first one is a grant of location for approximately 15 feet of conduit in Forest Street. And this is for a traffic signal in the vicinity of 37 Forest Street.
Are there any, is it in order, the application in order? Are there any questions? Is there anybody here from the public on 37 Forest Street? If there are no questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Yeah.
That disappears.
All right, I got it covered, exactly. I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy and install approximately 15 feet of conduit in Forest Street.
Second. Last chance for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. And Ms. Calendar, 212 Forest Street, please.
Yeah, so the second petition again is a grant of location for approximately 15 feet of conduit in the vicinity of 212 Forest Street, and this again is for a traffic signal.
Is everything in order, Ms. Fitzpatrick? Yes. Any questions from members of the board? Are any members of the public here on 212 Forest Street? Then I'd welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately 15 feet of conduit in Forest Street.
A second bet?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. The next item is a public hearing. Thank you, Joanne. The outdoor dining license for French Press LLC. I know that we have Jay Spencer here this evening. So French Press is here as part of the process to establish outdoor dining. And it's about the parklet.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You should have received in your packet several drawings and information regarding our expanded outdoor seating. The Select Board in 19 approved what you see today as an existing outdoor seating area of approximately 18 seats? Excuse me, 10 seats. We've gone separately through the planning board to approve a new pergola to be installed on the side of 78 Chapel Street, which is the former Elite Aesthetics. So that would be another 28 seats. And then we're also going before this board in order to have a seasonal outdoor parklet. So the pergola is going to be year-round for 28 seats. The parklet is going to be 18 seats, and that'll run from the April through November seasonal cycle that's licensed by the Select Board. So we're asking, because we do have a beer and wine license, our presence here this evening is to obtain approval for those 28 seats that are underneath the pergola for alcohol service and continual service in the parklet for those additional 18 seats in perpetuity.
Great, thank you, Jay. I know this has been a long road. I appreciate your bearing with us, and I know that people love sitting outside French Press, so more seats would be a good thing. Are there questions?
Yes, I have a burning question. You know that this meeting starts at 6:00?
Yes.
Nearly every meeting, I go to French Press in hopes of getting a coffee so that I can make it through this.
It's not open.
Monday and Tuesday, we close at 5:00. When today we're open.
Well, I'm just saying that I think that, you know, you should review your schedule because Select meetings aren't Tuesdays. I'll just leave that there.
More seating will allow that to happen.
All good. Are there any other questions? And Jay has already been, everything's in order, everything has been through the planning board in terms, and through the building inspector and all of that to ensure that all the metrics in keeping with our outdoor policy are met. Public hearing? This is a public hearing, so if there's nobody, no more comments from the board, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Paul, come on up.
Hi, that was Paul, I like it.
Actually, I just wanted to be able to, having been, been on the journey with Jay for, when we first started with parklet suggestions and all that.
When did that start, five years ago?
In 18.
Yeah.
And at that time, it wasn't fashionable, so it's come around.
Well, we went from, from basically working on having parklet, the first parklet design. And then that, we also had an alternate design, which was to have it out in front on the sidewalk. And I remember John Bullion saying, you know, we're not quite ready for the parklet thing yet, but we'll, I think we'll approve the, the, doing it on the sidewalk, and that would be your first step, and we'll see how that goes. Well, I'll tell you, it's been an absolutely wonderful experience. And, and Jay has been, you know, a champion of being able to, you know, try to be able to have outdoor seating really be a normal thing for, you know, for all of our restaurants and places where they need them. And so I'm delighted that, that everyone has, you know, works very hard to be able to, to make the new design work. And I know that the people of the town are going to, you know, really be loving it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? If there are no further comments or questions, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for French Press LLC, DBA French Press.
Second bet.
Right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, we can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
There's a second one. There is a second.
You got one more. You got one more.
There we go. Alteration of premises for wine and malt license, yes, comes in two parts. Right, so what we just dealt with was the outdoor dining and that setup. Now, as a result, Jay would also like to be able to serve wine and beer outside. And this hearing is for the wine and beer license to be able to use in the parklet and outdoor seating area. And again, this is in order?
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Are there any members of the public here to speak about this? Madam Chair? I'm going to be the one. Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the amendment for the alteration of premises, application received from French Press LLC, DBA French Press, and vote to forward the amendment application to the AVCC for review and final approval.
Second bet.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, you're good.
Thank you. No choice, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Oh, yes.
Wonderful, that brings us to our citizens petition. It's not a public hearing, so we can move forward on this. Right? Okay. Yes, this discussion only tonight. If Kathy and Rob and whoever is coming forward would please come forward, I don't know what the order of march is, but we're having our citizens petition presenting on single-use plastic bags. This is a petition that will be going to town meeting, so this is an opportunity where we can ask some final questions and where people can learn more about this initiative.
We thought we could start, and there's a number of other people here who are interested in speaking, as probably seen. But yeah, it's great to be here, thank you. And basically, we just wanted to mention at a high level that our goal here is to, Kathy and I will briefly review the bylaw and what is proposed. And then, yeah, and just provide some additional information and then allow others to speak. Because I think we have a short period of time, right, about 15 minutes.
About 15 minutes.
Okay, yeah, so basically, the, the point of the citizen, citizen, citizens petition is to ask town meeting members to pass a bylaw that would ban all thick and thin plastic bags that are currently being distributed at retail and restaurant stores in Needham. You know, not all stores are using them, but wherever they are, they would no longer be, would no longer be allowed. We, as part of this whole effort, we're certainly encouraging people to use reusable bags as well because we know that the overall goal is to reduce not just plastic waste, which is a big problem as we know, but kind of waste in general. Should I leave it there and pass it to you?
Sure, so we did survey the businesses in Needham, and the survey went out to about 75 businesses. 19 responded, and out of the 19 that responded, only three businesses are currently exclusively using plastic bags. Six of the ones who responded are not using any plastic bags. And the rest are kind of trying to really limit the use of plastic bags that they have. So, you know, we've, we found that in general, the businesses were supportive. In fact, the owner of Capella said, "I don't think we should give ourselves credit for doing something right." So he, you know, is a great example of a restaurant that serves pasta with sauces, and he has figured out ways to get around using plastic bags. We have great alternatives available to us, so yeah, we would like to move forward with this.
Yeah, and then I was going to brief, read kind of a part of a letter that was sent to us from someone who grew up, grew up in Needham, his name is Evan Raskin. His family still lives here, and he's now the National Campaign Manager for EarthDay.org, the official organizers of Earth Day Worldwide and Environmental Action Year Round. And he wanted to make sure that EarthDay.org put in a statement here in support of this bylaw. So basically, he said that, "I write to you today to inform that EarthDay.org has given its official endorsement of the proposed plastic bag ban bylaw." So we thought that was kind of exciting that this national organization is supportive of this. He goes on to say that banning plastic bags is a key step in ending single-use plastics, which are responsible for what is widely considered to be among the most significant public health crises of the modern world. So there's a lot more to this letter, and as you've also seen, there's a letter of support from the Sierra Club of Massachusetts as well.
And I just want to mention, before we came in tonight, there was an article that came out that currently there's a plastic recycling facility in Indiana that is on fire. And because of the toxic, the toxicity of plastic, 2,000 people have had to be relocated. So this is a huge problem, and Needham is not an island, so we feel we need to move forward to do what we can to help reduce this problem. Before any further, we, we have some very anxious fourth graders that we'd like to bring in.
We would move aside.
Yeah. And let them come. Yeah. Come on in. You all are welcome.
This is a little out of the ordinary. Thanks for, thanks for having us. So I kind of wrote a few notes here, so I wanted to say wish, you wish you a good evening and congratulations to Kathy and you, Mary Ann. For those who don't know me, my name is George Gonacanto, I teach 4th grade at Sunita Williams, and thank you for offering us this space to share tonight. My students and I have embarked on a service learning project supported by Kathy and, from Green Needham. And it's all about understanding plastic pollution and how it can help reduce it. My students will be sharing a little bit of what they've learned.
Do you know that plastic is made from fossil fuels? Do you know that much of the plastic that we discard ends up in our ocean? It gets churned up into microplastic, and then animals like sea turtles mistake it for food and get sick. Did you know that plastic is designed to last for hundreds of years, but oftentimes it is ju, is used just once and then thrown away? Using reusable bags reduces the, the plastic in our environment, in our oceans. It'll save the sea turtles and other ocean creatures. And we invent a better plastic, there are some, there are already some plant-based plastics made from potato starch and banana skins. We want to thank Kathy Waze from Green Needham, who taught us about the effects that plastics have on our environment. Please help us to make a difference. We would like to gift you with a reusable bag that made from upcycled t-shirts. We hope to see you supporting your reusable bags around town, please.
Yep, we have some little gifts for the board members that we made. So this is something that we made, might hand out your reusable bags.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So I'll, I'll sort of finish up with letting you know that we want, we want to make sure it's a fair distribution. So we want to let you know that tomorrow, my class, 4G here, and this gunning's class at Sunita Williams are sponsoring the first ever plastic-free lunch at Sunita Williams. This event is supported by, thank you. This event is supported by our principal, the Sunita Williams staff, Dr. Goodakans as well, with the dedicated help of Kathy and Needham High School students, the Environmental Club, and of course, the admin food staff and Sunita Williams cafeteria team. We all know that a collaborative effort is required to make good change. Thank you for offering my students the opportunity to be civically engaged. And the plastic bag, the reusable bags that you just received was a project that was offered by Newton Sewing Studios. And so we did that earlier in the year, we used upcycled, gently-used t-shirts to make reusable bags. So I want to thank you. So I want to thank you. So listen, we have one little verse. We made a song. So thank you for giving this opportunity, okay? We try it. You just do the first verse. Do you remember to bring your reusable bags to a vendor? We take care of our, and remember to bring reusable bags today.
So I hope all of you are helping your mom and dad to remember their reusable bags. Sometimes we adults forget a lot. Thank you. We appreciate you all coming, and of course, you have a song, Mr. Jay. We know that. Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if there's anybody else here who has a question related to plastic bags or a comment, feedback. You're welcome to come. Come on down, absolutely.
Short on time, so. Hi, everybody. Wells Blanchard, Needham resident since 2017. I'm on the board, the advisory board for solid waste and recycling, working with Greg Smith and Matt Demarees and a whole bunch of other folks. So two things I wanted to mention that you may or may not already know. We used to have a voluntary plastic bag ban, but then CVS and Roche Brothers decided that they could use thicker plastic bags that were designated as reusable, but a lot of people don't reuse them. In fact, most don't. So we see that at the Needham transfer station in the trash and in the recycling. So especially that is recycling because that jams up the machines. So I think that's mainly what I wanted to say. I'm in favor of this. I wanted to bring that sort of separate viewpoint. I think they tell lots of great things, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was gonna say, until this passes, if people do want to recycle those heavy plastic bags, they should take them back to Sudbury Farms and Roche Brothers, who do have the capability to recycle those. But.
They should.
Yes. Any other comments or questions? Please come on up.
Hi, I'm David Rudolph, longtime Needham resident, and I just wanted to speak in support of this ban as well. Just wanted to make two quick points. One is that I'm also a Sierra Club volunteer. I've worked with them for a long time, and there's a map on their website that shows all the towns in the state that have banned plastic bags. And if you look at that map, you'll see that Needham really stands out among metro west towns as being virtually the only one that hasn't done anything on this other than the voluntary ban, which is no longer really in effect. And then the other is that the comment's been made that, well, if we get rid of plastic, then people will just use paper, and that's maybe even more resource-intensive. And that's certainly a valid point, and we would like to get people to reuse as much as possible, bring reusable bags. And hopefully, the next step is to be able to charge for paper bags so that that encourages people and helps them remember more. But that's not something we can do as a town right now. We have to get state legislature to grant us that ability. But meanwhile, plastic still is a bigger problem than paper because plastic doesn't get recycled. I've seen statistics about one percent of plastic bags get recycled, while maybe fifty percent of paper bags do. And paper bags that don't get recycled decompose, while plastic causes all sorts of pollution, which has been mentioned by the students and others. So even despite the problems of paper, it's still preferable to plastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? I just want to say thank you both for spearheading this. I know it's been a long project. I'm really happy that it's come in front of us and that it will go to town meeting. And I just wanted to also say that I, I really appreciate that you didn't let yourself be dissuaded that there are lots of ways that people can make a difference, and the, the role modeling that you show by saying, you know, we're gonna do this however we can by taking it to a citizen petition, by taking responsibility for some portion of your community is very inspiring, and I appreciate the effort. And, and I, I hope that the rest of the community is watching and thinking about what matters to them and that they're gonna make that same effort in their own. It takes us all to make a big difference, and I think that you've just done a really good job here, so thanks.
Well said. Absolutely.
All right. I just want to echo the, the theme here about people using reusable bags. As people know throughout this campaign, I have said that to replace a plastic bag with a paper bag only gets us so far. A single-use bag is a single-use bag. We would all be better served by not having single-use bags. When I talk to some of our merchants in town, what I hear, in fact, is that for paper bags, thirty to forty percent of their customers request double bagging. So for those merchants, they have gone from a six-cent bag to a bag that's a cost of three X, really about twenty cents a bag, to doubling that cost. So essentially, all of us are bearing a factor of six X more as part of the process. And those costs do get passed along to all of us. So if we were all to do, in fact, what would be the better, more responsible act on our part? To actually take personal responsibility as opposed to just have this problem solved for us by moving from paper to plastic, right? We, as a community, will all benefit, and I hope we'll be able to do that. So. Any other comments or questions from the board? Then I want to thank Kathy and Rob for the work that they've done on this. I know that they'll be bringing it to town meeting. I think town meeting, in my perception, is looking forward to voting on this item. And we will go forward and see what happens next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of zoning articles on the annual town meeting morning. And I know we have some folks from the planning board here with us tonight. Is Lee online or?
I'm not sure, but she's gonna be able to make it.
She's not able to make it. She is here. Okay.
I just pulled us and switched my glasses at the last second. I thought Jean was gonna be able to join and follow Natasha, but.
That they weren't coming. Have you heard?
I thought that they were when I spoke to them earlier. But I, I'm happy to walk you through.
Madam Chair. Please do that, the articles that you've got. There are not any sort of blockbuster articles, I think, in some ways, but.
So what I thought I might do with your indulgence, if I may, first I'll identify what the categories of these four zoning bylaws are, and then perhaps take them in the reverse order.
Okay.
So there are, so the, the first zoning article that we're bringing to town meeting is to amend our ADU bylaw. We'll get into the details of that momentarily. We have a corrective zoning bylaw, which is designed to address some corrections that need to be made. For instance, reference from our building inspector to a building commissioner, reordering, renumbering some of the items in the zoning bylaw. There was a printing error. And then also, we're revising the parking reference, which was from the Institute of Traffic Engineers second edition. And now we're modifying the zoning to say the most current edition. So that's all part of the corrective zoning amendment. We have another zoning bylaw amendment that relates to a side setback. This comes as a result of the Large House Review Committee. And when they were trying to break up the massing of a single-family home, they wanted to, if I may, along this sidewall of a house at thirty-two feet, if you wanted to extend it. I'm not sure, Kathy, if you can see that. I'm kind of trying to be in the middle here. There'd be this jog, exactly. And what ended up happening is builders instead, by the A-reading of the zoning bylaw, instead of reducing the massing, would set, would set the whole house back two feet and instead have the whole house here. So there was no jog. There was no disruption in the massing, and that was never the intent. So, I, Natasha, thank you. So, so we're correcting the bylaw here to, to make more clear, particularly to builders, that they do, in fact, have to make this jog. And, and then, oh, Jean. And then the final zoning bylaw amendment relates to three-car garages and allows those as a matter of right in SRB and four-car garages as a matter of right in SRA. This comes to us, this last article comes to us really as, as a measure to reduce the red tape and for, for homeowners, where it's become very common. And I think in three years, two have been denied, and all you need on the zoning board for a denial is one member because you have a vote of three, and if one member chooses not to approve it, then it's an, then it's an automatic denial. But the other two board members did not agree that there was reason to deny the special permit in that case. So it's a matter of route. We're, you know, we're typically allowing these things. Some other points about the three-car garage is that we are requiring it consistent with the aims of the Large House Review Committee, that the, that the garages, the third-car garage be set back further. And, and that if a homeowner or a builder chooses that the third-car garage would be at the same plane or in front of the, of the plane of the house, that they would require a special permit process at that point. But otherwise, it's just an easy thing if it's, if the third car is set back a couple of feet. So that's designed to ease the burden both on the town because sometimes these applications get, will have hearings, and those hearings can get continued. And the ZBA staff is a half-staff. And, and it also saves the homeowner considerable time and effort as well. So do you have any questions on any of those three?
Any questions related to that?
Yeah, just one, one quick question. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I was just, for information purposes, for all the members of the, the board that are here and the three articles, was there more of a consensus, or was there anything that kind of was cause for pause when you were going through these within the board? Or any questions or concerns from your end?
I think that, I think we were pretty consistent on these three zoning articles. I think there was consensus. I don't recall, we talk about these things, but I don't recall any opposition on our board. I believe.
Yeah, I mean, it was a five to zero vote. The only discussion was related to the third-car garage, really in the front of the house. Setback, no setback type of thing. There was some discussion about that. And when we, we fell, we fell onto the five-foot setback.
Okay.
Third bay.
Madam Chair, so I'd like to discuss the three-car garage situation a bit. It strikes me that in a single-residence neighborhood, a three-car garage is a lot of garage. And we're facing a situation now where, at least in my neighborhood, it's, it's very easy to tear houses down, and it's very easy to build them back way bigger. So I guess I'm very concerned about this. I, I'm, as it stands, I'm not a fan. It makes me feel as though we are encouraging and removing any last barrier to destruction of older homes to be replaced with larger homes, larger and larger homes. And so I, I guess I, I need to understand why, in, in more detail, why we would want to remove barriers to, I mean, it seems like it's a small barrier, but it is some obstacle to achieve a permit from the ZBA. But it's, it's not clear to me why we want to do away with that. At what point do the neighbors get to weigh in? It's my understanding that everyone wants the neighbors to weigh in if they're gonna put an ADU in their backyard. But are we saying that the neighbors are not gonna have a chance to weigh in for a similarly-sized construction in the front?
So I know Jean wants to speak. I'd like to just mention a couple of things. I, I think, I think residents are interested in being able to talk about an ADU and to have a public hearing process when it's a detached structure. Typically, here, we're talking about it as an attached third-car, third-bay garage.
I don't mean to draw the two of those things together. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to illustrate my point about larger and larger homes.
So, but to your point that people are interested in, in a more public process, that's true, that's true, as you say, on the ADUs for detached, but not really for, you know, for a third-car garage that we're effectively talking about. The other point, which is a good one, and the, and the planning board, when we discuss our priorities for our new, for our new year, you know, we may add that, you know, the large home impacts and what we can do to modify that. But this particular addition of a third-car garage and the special permit process for a builder is not, is not a determining factor at all whether a builder is actually gonna buy the house and knock it down, whether it has one or whether they intend to build one. It's, that's not, that's, it's such an insignificant element in the overall, in the overall, it just doesn't.
Hear that, but I think.
Let's hear Jean's point. Let's hear Jean's point.
I want to mention that the initiative for this came from the zoning board of appeals, and in particular, the chair, John Schneider. And this was good, a good three or four years ago. And in response to his, what he was saying is that it, it's really not a good use of the time of the zoning board of appeals or its staff because these typically are not controversial and are always granted. And I went and took a set of photos and produced a little document that we, that we looked at to try to get an idea of, well, what really does seem to look okay? It really doesn't need a special permit, and what kind of thing would you really want to think twice about? And so that's why we drafted this to say, you know, if it's on the side of the house, or if it's, you know, if it's on the side of the house, it wouldn't need a special permit. If it's on the front of the house, it wouldn't need a special permit, provided it's set back five, at least five feet. And in, in doing that, we're, as Adam mentioned, we're also thinking of the work that was done by the Large House Committee on trying to avoid these flat walls. And also, it, it's like a, almost like a commercial look when you have three, the thing facing you in the front of a house is three garages. So that's the situation that would require a special permit if they were insisted on, they had no other way to do it other than having the third garage be flush with the front wall of the house. So, but really, it was in response to a concern of the zoning board of appeals.
Can I add just something? Yeah, I agree with what Jean just said. I mean, in general, all of them, all the special permits were granted, so it didn't, because the how, the, the land was large enough to be able to accommodate, especially if they're on their side. In order for you to be able to turn around, you need a significant amount of land, right? So in the front, and again, it's the articulation of it. They were still being granted, but we wanted to make sure that the articulation of that third bay occurred and not was just not by right. They were still being granted, but we wanted to make sure that the articulation of that third bay occurred and not was just not by right. So just to just to add more information to that.
I'm just thinking relative to Heidi's concern, is there some idea of lots of a certain size where these exist or could exist?
I guess I just want to just drop in, you know, you you had said, Adam, that this was really in this this process was really insignificant to the builder in terms of determining whether or not the the builder would go through this process to get to the be able to build a three car garage. And I just want to say that I, well, I recognize that. I think that's true. But I don't think it's insignificant to the neighbors and the neighborhood or to generally speaking, you know, the the situation that we find ourselves in, which is that we are having houses of increasing size and price. And so I I do think that it's relevant and I I I think that just making this by right strikes me as a mistake. It strikes me as yet another domino to fall to allow sort of the the destruction of our neighborhoods. I know that sounds very dramatic and I I recognize that one single, you know, one three car garage is not the end of the world. But I do think that, you know, as we look and as we adopt a housing plan and we say that we have a housing crisis and that people from Needham can no longer afford to live here, we have to look at these elements that make up that condition. And I think this is one of them. So I just, I'll leave it there. But I just want to say that I think that if it is such a small barrier, then we shouldn't do away with it. Regardless of the inconvenience to the ZBA.
I just want to fill in from these kind of the timeline, some of our discussions. So when it first came up, it certainly, there was certainly discussion with the zoning board of appeals. Is is how is it really needed? Because I mean, there was not, I I won't speak for everyone, but I certainly had concerns. Is it, do we really want to go down this road? Is it really necessary? Now, I believe there were a couple, I believe there were a couple that were denied of the when they when they went to the ZBA. So I believe there were a couple that were denied. Absolutely. Actually, I personally had some concerns. We certainly went through discussion trying to visually get a balance of what might happen, the balance of the desire of the ZBA. I understand the concern. In my in my viewpoint, is this going to bring more cars? I don't know if it's going to change anything on the house being torn down or not. I see it's going to bring more cars. I I agree that we need to do something further about the houses being torn down. I do not know if this is going to impact that aspect, but I can certainly see it impacting more cars and certainly a larger driveway footprint in the front of the house and then the side of the house. So it there is an impact and it was not granted all the time, although majority of the time. We don't, I don't personally know visually what all those look like. And if it was, you know, if it became a an obvious thing to the ZBA, that yes, clearly that's perfectly acceptable versus the ones that were denied. What category do they fit into versus now if it's just by right? You know, with that, that one would then potentially just be by right, which was then denied. I I don't know that. And then I don't know all the other ones that would be then simply by right. Certainly there's concern.
So I don't know if this is helpful or not. Of the two that were denied, I think both of them ended up being extra rooms, if I recall properly.
I don't, I don't, yes.
In at least one case, I know for certain it turned into an extra room. So I know that the neighbors, when they protested, they had hoped that it would result in a smaller house by that third garage. And the answer is it didn't change the footprint at all in either cases, my recollection. So it's, you know, this challenge of the large houses, I think, is almost bigger. And then people choose how they allocate the space in the footprint that they have available to them.
And the FAR. So I think it's more the FAR than the actual.
Oh, control. And we will have other things coming into play here as well. I mean, as we start to do stormwater, then the town will also get into looking at impervious surface. So larger drivers will have an impact in other ways on on property owners. It's a multi variant.
That are required to comply with the stormwater management bylaw.
Yeah. So, right. Concern heard. Any other questions relative to these articles? Otherwise.
Um, now, that part of the seventeen does raise my eyebrows. Looking at we can't garage bay. I mean, it's going to start looking like a jiffy lube. But I also think we're talking about sort of an economic disparity in Needham, this gap. You know, young families can't move into Needham, but now we're just ratcheting it up and we can do a three car garage. And anecdotally, I was part of the neighborhood that protested to the ZBA by the three car garage.
You're you're one of the two denials, yes.
And, you know, the neighbors not enjoyed and liked having the input that they could do it. It's true, the house was built in $2.6 million. So I don't think anyone lost anything. But I think it was valuable for the neighborhood that they could actually try to control the look of their neighborhood. And so it was appropriate that we went to the ZBA. I also just think, though, as we build houses bigger and bigger, we are sort of, we're signaling something that we're really having a larger gap between the haves and the haves not in town. So.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't deny that that's that that's true. I mean, when I bought my first house in this town, the median price of a single family home in Needham was substantially less than it is in the last quarter at $1.5 million. That's true. That disparity exists. This bylaw is not is not really intended to it to address that. It's it's intended to address an internal town department scenario where they're accepting the two in two circumstances, they're not typically denied. And that to my to my colleagues comment that it may attract additional cars, those cars exist. So what should be the alternative that our ZBA has pointed out is those cars and those lawn mowers and the toys that we have for our children are not in a garage, are not held and are just outside and maybe and maybe and, you know, and can become perhaps unsightly when about the house as opposed to when it's actually contained inside, you know, a third, a third bay. I understand your comment about the a jiffy lube and but someone may have that car anyways, because as the ZBA had pointed out, more and more people, as they're moving in here and their and their children are of age to drive, that they do have a third or a fourth car. And this is an opportunity to to keep it, I guess, out of the elements and to contain in addition, the other things that we have in New England in our houses.
Okay, but we are talking about the loss of a process here. You've gone on to say that most of these are approved, but the two that weren't weren't because the neighbors participated in the process that allows them to speak up when something's going on that they that they have a stake in. And what we're talking about is taking their stake away. So my, the problem is that if the process is working as it is for like 99% of these things, what's the problem? Let's give the people a chance to comment on those things that they keep close to their heart, that they have a stake in. The process is clearly working. I understand that there is, you know, an added burden on the ZBA, but that is what the ZBA does. And so it doesn't strike me as such a burden that we should deny people the opportunity to participate in the process.
So and this will go to town meeting and town meeting will weigh in on it.
All I want to say is I I regret that we didn't invite John Schneider to this meeting. Because we're really doing this and what we hope is a thoughtful way to accommodate that what what was presented to us as a need of this other board. And I find it hard to speak to it, not having been the one who, you know, conducted these hearings. And he could speak to it so much better.
I'm sure that Mr. Schneider will be at town meeting and be prepared to speak to this question because as I think you heard it at your hearing, it will definitely come up again. That's absolutely true. Any other questions on this? Are we ready to move to ADUs? Everybody's favorite topic, ADUs. Besides three cars. Even more than three.
So ducks oppose the three car garage with the purposes and the plight of the ADUs. The ADUs under our current bylaws were were enacted several years ago to effectively accommodate seniors to continue to age in place with an with an attached ADU. In other words, an accessory dwelling unit that was contained within the footprint of their house. They could bump out a little bit, but it was still attached to the to the primary residents. It was limited to 850 square feet and only family and certain kinds of caregivers could remain either in the house or in in the ADU. And and again, the goal was really to help seniors and to accommodate those with certain special needs. What we've seen is in the last three years, the town has approved 12. There have been no denials of the ADUs. ADUs are a very low impact contribution towards affordable housing. Affordable housing will in itself not be solved by the ADUs. That's, you know, to come perhaps with other efforts in many other ways, but an ADU can help, can then provide relief for a whole host of other meaningful constituents or meaningful residents in our town. For instance, it can help support local workforce housing, that are teachers and our public safety officers. And even those that that provide us coffee and clean up our tables have an opportunity to live in our town. I note to that point in a conversation that I had with the owner of of French Press, there, you know, his staff can be 45 minutes to an hour and a half away. That is quite a burden and they've all stayed with with him throughout the pandemic, which is a testament to many things. And yet, if it was a little bit more convenient, that may that may help. But it also can help with with others who are looking to move in to Needham or to stay in Needham, where they are able to rent out. So now we're talking about some changes to our current condition. The new condition will allow certain things that I'll talk about and then I'm going to make it just, and then I'm going to make some distinctions. First of all, we're we're seeing many communities have allowed ADUs up to 900 square feet, where we are 850. So we're recommending a change to the zoning bylaw to 900 square feet. We are broadening the definition of family to include grandparents, uncles and aunts, which had been which had not been included before. And to the kind of caregiver, it's not just someone with a special need. Now it's also with childcare workers. Occupancy for the ADUs is limited to five unrelated persons and no more than three persons in the actual ADU, which is confined to a one bedroom ADU, as had been the case under existing bylaw change.
And five in the whole building.
Five.
In the whole building.
Between the whole, both, between both the ADU and and the primary dwelling. That's right. We are continuing to require that we preserve the single family character and design in our single family residential districts. We're also requiring off street parking to accommodate, whether by third car garage or other means, that all parking be off street for for the ADU and for the entire property. And that the ADU, as with the primary residents, will need to comply with the town stormwater management bylaw under the authority of DPW. The the rental is a significant component. Now, we're proposing that we allow people to be able to rent these out. That can help our seniors in particular, who may have a tax bill of $15,000 to $18,000 a year and may be able to offset that with $24,000 to $36,000 a year in an additional revenue. That that lease would be a minimum of six months. Initially, we're contemplating 12 months. We are ultimately looking to get away from high frequency turnover. And in particular, with the maladies that typically come with rapid fire ADU rentals. And we've also found that there are circumstances that can be beneficial to those in the community that may be doing a renovation to their home and a six month solution can work for them. And in particular, among other occupations, nurses are often rotating around on a six month basis. And I know of colleagues of mine that that specialize in renting to those to that particular cohort. We anticipate these would predominantly be 12 month leases. We've heard during our public hearing process that the community would like to see the town provide information about becoming a landlord. Anyone can rent their house now. Anybody can rent on a condo or an apartment. They may, they they may have for rent and providing information about the obligations for for being a landlord and understanding the nature of the landlord tenant relationship could be a helpful benefit. I think that could be easily accessible as a pamphlet and online, perhaps at the building department. Now comes the other significant shift, where before I had mentioned under the existing condition, it's only allowed as an attached structure. What we're talking about now is allowing it as a detached structure. So where someone may have a third car garage, that they would actually be able to turn that, if it was a detached structure, into if it was code compliant, to turn it into a an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit would be would be set back at the consistent with our accessory setback at five feet, provided that the ADU was at a maximum height of 15 feet. Once that structure is over 15 feet in height, for instance, if someone wanted to build an ADU over a two car garage, that kind of thing, if that garage was detached, it has to be moved either 12 feet or 14 feet from the 14 feet from the side, depending on whether it's a conforming or a nonconforming lot. So I would also note in our study with other municipalities, which is an ongoing exercise by us and the the Board of Health has also offered to participate in part of that research process, which I think will be helpful. We've found that many municipalities do allow a detached structure. And we've also, we've also found that this has been able to provide additional relief for low impact housing. And I think I've touched most of the points for the ADU. Thank you very much. I'm glad you brought that up.
Big point.
So the by right condition would remain where we have it now. But while now an attached ADU requires a special permit, we will remove that barrier and allow that by right. Where there is a detached ADU, it would require a special permit process as well. So thank you for calling that out. I appreciate that.
I mentioned one other thing, and you did touch on maintaining the appearance of a single family property. In any circumstance, with a building commissioner does not feel comfortable making that determination. The provision is found in the proposed bylaw for a referral to the design review board. And then the building commissioner can take into account the recommendations of the design review board. If the building commissioner, however, does feel comfortable making that decision without the referral, it's not obligatory.
Something to that. The design review board does not review any residential projects. Single family residential projects is what Mark Lewson told us when we were talking about the large houses. So only during the referral of the building inspector is when they review it in special occasion. So that's also part of the bigger discussion of the large house. Because there's really no, no one reviewing it besides the building inspector and they're basing it on the laws of the Commonwealth.
And their zoning.
And the zoning. The zoning is the only one where when the zoning. And the zoning. The zoning is the only one where when the zoning needs a special permit or they need a variance for the zoning is when things are reviewed.
I did mean to include another point, which I apologize for, if I may.
I'm laughing. You're going to have to really tighten this up for town meeting.
Yes, understood. I so what we what we're also finding is that with this with a detached structure, there are three limiting factors for in a detached ADU. One is not all lot, this won't work on all lots. The dimensional regulations we have in our zoning bylaw will preclude this as being a detached structure as being a viable option on some of those lots. Also, code compliance with a base building code, the stretch code, which we've entered into, and we may enter into the the next opt-in energy code for net zero, are also limiting factors that may prohibit a detached ADU. And then, of course, there is the cost of a detached ADU, where if someone's creating one or as new construction or is remodeling an otherwise compliant structure, they still have to excavate for perhaps for perhaps for electrical conduit, but more importantly, for plumbing. And then, in addition to that, they'll have significant electrical expenses, different roofing insulation requirements and things like that, in addition to, you know, what you typically find with new construction for, you know, a kitchen, a living room, and a bedroom, and so on. So those economic factors may be a limiting factor for detached ADUs.
Okay. So I'm going to open this up to questions for the board. I am just a quick check at timing and noting that we're running a little bit behind at the moment. But we are going to need to vote on this. So if there are questions.
Yeah, I just had two questions. First thing, Adam, I know that you mentioned it could be an additional twenty-four to thirty-six thousand in income, and that's charging two to three thousand dollars for the unit, which, when I think about affordability, I think that's nowhere near affordable for the people that are probably looking to that were looking to help when you talk about talking to owner of French Press. Two to three thousand is is hefty, and I think that's what some of the prices and things are now, which makes it not affordable for a lot of people to either want to stay in their homes or to move here or to stay in this community. So is that the suggested price that you're you're telling them, or you're just saying that's a possibility?
So I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
Yeah.
Two thousand to three thousand dollars a month is the range of a typical one-bedroom apartment in Needham.
Correct.
It's not meant in any way to be a suggested price. The town would have no role. Anyone would determine their own price of the, you know, of the ADU.
Okay. All right. I'm glad. I just wanted to make sure that that was known. And then the other, yes, go ahead.
One of the things that's complicated here is if somebody is building the ADU from scratch, the cost of it is likely to be more than we think.
Oh, I see.
Okay. And in fact, if the owner is looking to recover those costs, say, in a three-year period, they may be back to charging that amount for it to recover their costs. So it's an interesting economic question. So I think it's just worth our understanding.
The other point of affordability is that it may allow the people, the occupants of the primary residence to move into the the ADU and then to rent out the main primary house at perhaps eight, nine, ten, twelve thousand a month or more, which is not uncommon in Needham.
Wow. Okay. And then I had a hypothetical question. Would if by chance there are already some detached places that have in existence in Needham, what is it? Is there a penalty for that? Or what would happen? Or?
You mean for code compliance to?
Yeah. So hypothetically, say, of houses or homes already have those, but it hasn't been talked about.
So.
Come before anyone. What what happens with that?
So ultimately, it's really with a process through the building commissioner, and the unit would have to meet all of the codes.
Got it.
And, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I had a question. So I appreciate all the thought that's gone into this and all the detail and and the length of the lease being six months for preventing the short-term rentals. What would happen if someone did use their ADU as an Airbnb despite, I mean, in violation of the rules?
So under the under, that's possible today. So it's, you can do that with your it with an illegal in-law apartment or with a legal in-law apartment?
Or with a house.
Or with a house. Correct. That's absolutely right.
And today, what happens is somebody ends up calling the police department and reporting it, and they would go investigate. So.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to throw in there that, you know, whatever the homeowner decides to charge, however much it costs to build, to my mind, that's totally irrelevant. Like, that's their financial calculation. Doesn't, we don't, we don't need to take an interest in that or play a role in that. I would like to say, though, that I can see a situation, at least the the finance makes sense to me, you know, lots of people have elderly parents, they need to house someplace. Often, a renovation, no matter how expensive we feel it is, is still less expensive than assisted living, independent living, what have you. So I think that, you know, we ought to focus a little bit less on what it might cost and think about how it can facilitate the lives of the people who for whom the few for whom this would make sense. And I think it's a wonderful option to have.
I think that's actually quite true, that it is one piece of many in the toolkit that gives some options for particular families. I am curious, I think I was reading the Wellesley by law, and it seemed to me that they actually didn't permit ADUs detached on smaller lots. Have you looked at that? Is that?
So so my understanding is so is twofold. First, Wellesley lots are typically larger in many cases. And and secondly, they did they did restrict it on lots under a certain size. That's right.
Okay. All right. I thought that was interesting, because I know there's been such concern, and it's really on lots that are significantly tighter to neighbors.
So what so to that point, to that point, we've been working with with Oscar Mertz, who's been extremely helpful in producing some drawings or sample site plans of whether this could work on lots of a certain size in Needham. We did conduct a site plan study, which was extremely helpful. And that's partly how we found that the dimensional regulations, not just the setbacks, but also the floor area ratio and other, and also equally importantly, the the lot coverage as a dimensional regulation would would effectively control on small lots.
Yep.
Which is a different way to handle it. And it's an alternative, the way that Wellesley did.
Are there other questions? I think there there are definitely some hot topics within this that I expect we will all hear questions related to at town meeting. And as we say all the time, town meeting decides.
I think it is important, to be fair, that the vote at the planning board was two to three or three to two, depending on how you look at it, as far as in favor of passing.
It was three to one to one. I had.
Oh, you abstained? No.
Because I had I had questions of some of the issues where I wasn't willing to vote for, I wasn't willing to vote against.
So so it wasn't, yes, so the issue, yes. So I don't believe affordable, I don't remember affordable housing being a any real part of our conversation. That could be mistaken. I don't remember that being really big part of our conversation. And but there are there are concerns. I mean, which is some of the reasons why myself, I didn't I didn't vote in favor because the because of the second part of the detached structure. So I think if we're going to speak, I think it's fair to at least make sure that's clear, that part of it. And my, you know, one concern is that, and I actually didn't even know the answer to this. So builder comes in, and now now they now they see the opportunity of building, essentially, the the second detached structure is essentially is a house, is essentially is a second house, or an apartment, however, where you want to call it. A builder comes in and tears a house down, and now now he's building two, because I know it has to be owner-occupied, but they're building it for an owner. So now they're building one house plus another much smaller house. And that much smaller houses, if it's fifteen, as long as it's not greater than fifteen feet, can be and and is ten feet away from the main house, can be anywhere in the property line, not just where an existing garage is, in the far back of it, left, right, it can be anywhere on the property line, as long as it maintains the five foot from the setback and ten, ten feet from the main house.
So I do hear you, Artie. I think that that's an economic decision that builders would make, and they need to find the right buyer for that as well. So again, it's introducing a layer of complication in that sense. And I, what other towns I think I've seen is that there there have not been huge numbers of these. So I don't think we've seen that occurring in other places where that opportunity has been created. That's not to say it might not happen here, but we have not seen it take place once that opportunity has been created in other places. But we should understand all the possibilities. There's no doubt.
Natasha, very quickly, one of the reasons why I voted for it was because I feel that there is that, that, you know, that it needs to be equitable between the small lots and the larger lots, because there are needs for caretakers or others, and we don't want us to only be in the larger lots and not allow the smaller lots. If it's detached, it has to go through special permit anyway. So it felt that it gave an opportunity for everyone to be treated equally in town. So that was, that was.
Sure.
Yep.
Glad Natasha mentioned the special permit. I wasn't sure if I had mentioned it. Detached requires a special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions from our board that people are interested in knowing the answers to? All right. We thank you for coming in to consult, and appreciate all of you coming.
Madam Chair?
Move the consent agenda.
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero. Thank you. All right. That brings us to a public hearing relative to a suspended alcohol license for Poet King LLC doing business as Hungry Coyote. This is a hearing that has been continued. This board has in front of it a, you're welcome to approach. My understanding is that this board has in front of it actually a change of manager application that was to appoint Leon Leon as the manager of record. I understand that we have been informed that there is an intention to submit a different change of manager application.
Yes. So Michael Madler, what I did is, at the board's suggestion from the February fourteenth hearing, the the unit purchase and sale agreement that was presented, I did amend that to remove the confidentiality provision that the board asked me to do, and I did send that to.
It's a different hearing. So that's a separate hearing.
So, yeah, so.
Okay. So right now, this is just related to Ms. Leon being the manager of record. And I think the under, what I understand is that that is not still in front of this board.
Correct. What we intend to do is we'd ask that that the hearing get the suspension hearing get continued. After careful consideration and going through the board's list of what documentation information they asked for, we decided that it's probably be not possible to provide all the information. So we've decided that we're going to seek Mr. Leon's appointment as the manager. So what I will do, what I'm planning to do is to amend the application, do a new application effectively to put it before the board to seek to get Mr. Leon appointed.
Okay. So I think we actually are interested in having you do that new application. So what we would propose for this board, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I see you want to speak.
The I understood the attorney to say that he wants to amend the existing, and I believe that the board has an interest.
And then he followed that up with essentially creating a new application. So I want to be clear.
I would do a new application.
That we do want you to do a new application. So so with that in mind, what we would like to do is, in fact, I have some official language, but we actually want to close this hearing, all right? And we want to ask for a new application on this to come to us within the next three months. So we want to put sort of a date certain on it, because this has been rolling for a while.
Do it within the next two weeks.
Well, so we'll just say that we do want it to occur within the next three months. And at that time, we'll take in a new application when it exists, and we will look at it then and come to a determination. Okay. So if, does everybody have the motion language? I would actually welcome an a motion related to option two, which is the one to close this hearing and set a new date for bringing new application.
Perfect.
If somebody would make that.
Madam Chair, I will move to close this hearing and take no action because the licensee no longer intends for Leona Leon to serve as a manager of record and further to authorize the town manager to notify the lessian writing that the board will hold a hearing to cancel the license for non-use unless the following occurs within the next three months. This one, the select board votes to approve a change of license manager application, appointing someone other than Leona Leon to the position of a licensed manager. Two, the select board finds Leona Leon or, yes, or the new person of sufficient character to serve as the licensed manager, and votes to lift the suspension order dated January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Or three, the select board approves an application transferring the license to a new corporate entity.
Okay. And a second.
Second.
All right. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, then coming into the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero. All right. So that that gives us an approach to go forward with respect to the the new manager. Next, we have a hearing related to the corporate officer. And my understanding, I think, there is that since the last application, I don't think we've received any new materials, right? So we do not have additional information at this point in time as it relates to the amendment for the change of officers or the change of corporate ownership. And that's that's correct, right? There is no information that has been submitted to the town by this hearing.
Since the last application, no. As I, as I said before, the only thing that I did is at the last hearing, the board had asked to amend the unit purchase and sale agreement to remove the confidentiality provision and to correct the typo, which I did both. And I sent those over to Mr. Tucker earlier today, this afternoon sometime. So he's got the first amended unit purchase and sale agreement, which has been signed.
I'm sorry, Ms. I can repeat that?
Sure. So that on February fourteenth, the board had asked me to amend the unit purchase and sale agreement that we had submitted to remove the confidentiality provision, which was paragraph twenty-two, which I removed, and had the entitled the First Amendment unit purchase and sale agreement, and it's been re-executed by the parties and resubmitted.
Just to clarify, we haven't seen that. No, we haven't seen that.
Okay.
We had asked for material by, I think, last week sometime, so that it could be included in the in the packet for distribution, and that did not occur. All right. So I think at this point, again, this has been a hearing that has been continued for a while on a transaction that took place for a while ago, right? I'm trying to quickly read through these. I think at this juncture, I would suggest to the board that we want to deny the application for the corporate ownership. And we would move to deny that application at this point. Because as we currently understand what has been previously provided to us, Mr. Leon will be the only individual with a direct or indirect beneficial or financial interest in the license, and he will have significant control over the operation of the establishment. And the board at this point does not find him to be of sufficient character to hold an interest in the license. We are concerned about the history of ignoring the orders of the town, local municipal bodies, including the disregard for the summary suspension order of the Needham Board of Health. And we've had certainly other delays. And we've had certainly other delays in obtaining documents here. So that type of a motion would be the motion that I would propose to the board for consideration. Now, we have some language of that nature in front of us, so I open for discussion.
So before you go on, one quick thing, the reason why I did not submit the amended unit purchase and sale agreement was I was hoping to do everything all at once. There's been discussions up until two days ago where Mr. Leon was actually talking to a third-party person, a third-party entity or person to be, to come in and actually be a manager instead of doing it through one of them, which those discussions ended up not going forward after a couple of days. So that's why I hastily put together the First Amendment to get, to at least get that and to deal with the to deal with the ownership issue and the transfer of the LLC interest. Just so the board knows, it wasn't anything intentional. It just was the way it worked out that they were trying to find somebody else to be a third-party manager here.
Well, so there's still an opportunity to go forward with the manager, but this this denial would say that in terms of the big picture for ownership, that if there were to be a license still there, that the structure needs to have some other beneficial owners involved, right? Is that what I understand? Mr. E, that's a fair way to put it?
Yes, if I may, if you recall, we submitted an operating agreement with the package that was, that was provided with the application. The operating agreement has provisions in it for an advisory board, which basically now is made up of Mr. Saye to act as an advisor to Mr. Leon with regard to you know, entity and LLC and operational matters and financial matters and things like that. So the operating agreement does provide for that advisory board and for Mr. Saye's participation with Mr. Leon. I know it was advised last time that the board hadn't seen much of Mr. Saye, but my understanding and from my personal knowledge is that Mr. Saye has been somewhat actively involved with Mr. Leon in operating and actually operating the business behind the scenes.
If that's the case, may I? If that's the case, and he has been actively involved, then what is the difference that you're suggesting an advisory board would?
Because, so Mr. Saye wanted to take more of a backseat going forward and didn't want to be directly involved with the day-to-day operations, especially now that, you know, the business has been open for whatever period of time, and Mr. Leon now has the experience in order to operate and run it himself, including that he's got an accounting firm that he uses to do to do his payroll taxes and things like that. He's got the name of the entity escapes me, but the people you've come in for operation stuff, for the, for the cleaning and for temperature controls and all that stuff.
Yeah, we'll have to deal with the, it's called, it's a food service company. They need a people use, they make me use it for a whole year.
So those are in place now. So mainly, Mr. Saye's role has, has, and over the last year, has become more of a financial role as opposed to, you know, operational type things. So the advisory board was a way that Mr. Saye doesn't have to be as actively involved as he was as the actual manager of the LLC. It was a, it was a single-member LLC, just him. So he didn't want to be, he didn't want to continue being the sole manager with the responsibilities that that entails and wanted to take on the advisory board. So that's why we set up the advisory board.
Okay, so the advisory board leaves it so that Mr. Leon would be the only individual with a direct or indirect beneficial or financial interest in the license. That's what the agreement says. And that is the piece that the board is finding is not acceptable. All right, it is not related to the advisory board. I understand the advisory board.
So let me understand what you're saying. You're saying because I did not went through with the Hill Department, whatever they were wrong, do you believe they were a hundred percent true of what they were doing? Do you believe they were right?
I think Francisco, we, hold on, we addressed this at the last hearing. So I think, I think.
She's using that particular moment to accuse me of something that I didn't do.
I understand.
Be guilty, you gotta be guilty in a court of law. They don't know what they're doing. So I've been doing this for twenty years. She comes to my restaurant thinking that she knows all about it and accused me of being wrong, getting people sick. If I would have listened to her and I would have closed my store, I would have lost my business. This is about money. It's not about how anybody here feels. I make burritos for a living to make money. This is all about money. This is business. This is not how anybody feels. She felt that I was wrong. I felt that she was wrong. She tried to prove it.
Mr. Leon, thank you for that.
She make everything.
Please ask to be recognized first. Okay, thank you. Right, are there questions from the board?
Yeah, Matt Saye is saying we'd be on the advisory board, right?
Yes.
Right, that's not the strongest argument because he was around when the restaurant was open in violation of the closure. So I don't think that's the best argument.
No, I didn't, I wasn't making it for an argument from that point of view. I was just making it, I was just making the statement from the standpoint that, that Francisco's been running the business long enough, and then the issues came up in January of last year where these couple of third parties have come in, the accountant, and then the third party to help with the food service part of the business. So to the extent that, to the extent that I guess my point is that, that, that Leon has had, given his experience over the last year of what needs to be done, that that's one of the reasons why Mr. Saye felt that he could step back, but he still would be involved from a financial standpoint to help guide the business that way.
So I think the other issue is that we're not actually discussing passing conferences. We're not seeing, talking about what happened with the restaurant when there were problems. What we're talking about is what you said on February fourteenth, and you just repeated now. You kept the restaurant open because you didn't think it was right.
They're right. It was being targeted.
No, you didn't think it was right. You thought they were wrong.
Right.
But no one is allowed to be above the law. The law said you had to close. It was a.
Find guilty before you can find guilty.
No, there are other remedies. There are other remedies. You stayed open in violation of the closure. And the President of the United States is not above the law, nor is the chef, even a really good one. So that was a problem. That's what this hearing is discussing. It's not the pack. It's not your passing conferences. What we're talking about is your character, which is much more awkward. But that is what we're discussing here.
Character, no listening to one order. She's not, we're not in the army.
Well.
This is, this is, this is real business.
And this is really.
You understand business. This is money.
We all know.
She tried to shut me down and what am I, lose my business over her? Whatever she was wrong.
Mr. Leon, we have rules of civility here. We'd like you to be recognized. You can say your piece, but you need to wait your turn.
I'm most aware of no one.
Are there other questions that people have related to this?
So I guess for going forward, when, when I left here on the fourteenth, I understood what the board was looking for in terms of information for a new manager and with Ms. Leon and that. So now with this added wrinkle with regard to Mr. Leon.
We had to buy a new manager.
Well, so effectively, you're looking for somebody to come in and become a new manager of the LLC. And that Mr. Leon would effectively then be an employee of the LLC.
Correct.
Subject to, subject to a third-party's, a third-party's responsibility. And what's the board's, just so I, just so I know when I come back here and I can discuss it, because obviously this is an extremely emotional issue. Is the board looking for a manager to be on site on a regular basis? So I mean, the manager, meaning the manager of the LLC, of the entity, is the board looking for the manager of the entity to actually be on site for some period of time, similar to what the licensee for the, with the manager for the, for the liquor license would be? And I'm just trying to get a handle on what I'm looking at here. So, because obviously I'm going to have to counsel Mr. Leon and deal with this emotional issue and determine, you know, who, how, what somebody's involvement actually has to be.
So, so the manager certainly should have some involvement with the business. And the manager should be somebody who has the ability to say that we are going to comply with the law. All right, and if there's an order, the manager needs to be somebody who can say to Mr. Leon that this is what we're going to do. We all understand that it's business, but business means also that we need to comply.
How do you get it closed?
Just relax. Let me, I'm trying to get an understanding of what the board is looking for so I can help you comply with what they'd, what they'd like, so.
That's right. We're trying to figure out how we can move forward. All right, but it needs to be, when we heard at the last hearing, right, that Mr. Leon was able and willing to say to Ms. Leon, right, that, that he would make different decisions, still based on his own judgment, says to me that we need somebody to be there who is able to exercise judgment that's in keeping with a fragment for operating the business.
Okay. And again, I'm just trying to get a handle. When you say somebody being there, I mean, are we, are we looking at the equivalent of a, of a manager for a liquor license that's obviously has to be there? You know, forty hours a week or whatever the substantial amount of time is, or are we looking at somebody that just has oversight responsibilities that can show up, you know, every other day or once a week to make sure that, that everything's running properly?
So I would have said that oversight is sufficient as long as they're there if there's a real need for them to be there. If something occurs, they may need to be there on site.
So it sounds to me, what I'm effectively looking at doing is to bring a third party in not only as, not only to operate, not only to, to be the manager of the entity, but also to effectively then be the person on site that's the manager for purposes of the liquor license.
Sure. I think that's correct.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing. I just wanted to clarify, make sure that that's what I'm hearing.
I think that's correct. All right.
Yep.
See, well, I think what you, what you worry about is it's not going to happen again. Me and the Hill Department, we have a greater relationship over the last year. We talk all the time. I, I do one, two, three, even if I'm the only, the only restaurant in town, they have to do login for everything. Everybody else doesn't do it. I had to be the one. You think that's right?
I hope that that relationship is wonderful and stays that way.
Yeah, I work here. I live here. I make burritos for a living. I live here. I had to be cool with the Hill Department. Even if we got disagreements, it was a disagreement where I felt was wrong. She felt it was right. None of you know.
Okay. So you understand what we need?
I, I know.
She wants me to hire a manager to manage me and told me to close when they even told me to close. That's, that's not going to happen again. But I can hire a person like that. I'm going to hire a person that does the, listen, company liquor license really doesn't matter. I'm working because the town is bothering me. The locals are saying, well, you gotta be a listener all the time. Other than that, I don't need it. I make over, I'm not going to say my business.
So that would.
I don't really need it. I don't need to go through this hassle when you're asking me to hire a manager to manage me. You tell me whether I'm doing wrong or right. I'm capable enough to run a restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Okay.
Do you want to withdraw the application?
So I, I don't want to withdraw the liquor license. Again, this, this is obviously a very emotional issue. I, I will, I will sit down and, 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 you know, meet with my client and discuss it with him and you know, what, what makes sense to do. But obviously, it's a very emotional issue. No, I do not want to withdraw the liquor license issue because I, based on my involvement in the business, based on my, you know, other restaurants I've been involved in and obviously having the liquor license makes an enormous difference in terms of, in terms of your potential revenue. And it can work here and, you know, if this wasn't such a hot button issue with my clients, as I said last time, we've discussed certain ways to improve things. So just quickly, for example, if you know the layout of the restaurant, you know, we've discussed, as we, I think we mentioned last time we're here on, on February fourteenth, taking the back half using some, some, not, not doing construction, but using some, some means to segregate that back half.
So I think we'll look at that at a separate time. We need to straighten out this first issue first.
I'm just saying, no, just to answer your question, that I know I do not want to, speaking for my client, no, I do not want to revoke the license, and we've actually taken steps to, to, to figure out the best way, but I, I, I understand the board about what they're saying, and I, I've been doing this long enough, whether here or whether standing in front of a judge in Superior Court to hear what they're saying. So I, I get it and I understand. And you clarified my question. So I'm, I'm good that way, and I will, as you, as you said, Ms. Chloe, you know, moving forward, that that's, that's the path to move forward, and that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
I heard and understood.
Okay, great. Then I'm going to ask for a motion, option three here, using certainly bullet points one and two. Bullet point number three could be used just in terms of delay and receipt of documents, but you know.
Madam Chair, I move that the board deny the application submitted by Poet King Restaurant Group LLC doing business as Hungry Coyote on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two for a change of officers, change of ownership interest and transfer of stock is approved. As approval of this application does not support the common good for the following reasons. While Mr. Leon will not be the license manager, Mr. Leon will be the only individual with a a direct or indirect beneficial or financial interest in the license and has shared that he will exhibit significant control over the operation of the establishment. And the board does not find him to be of sufficient character to hold an interest in this license. Mr. Leon has a history of ignoring orders of local municipal bodies, including blatant disregard for a summary suspension order of the Needham Board of Health. And Mr. Leon has delayed provision of documents requested by the select board relevant to this hearing. I move that we authorize Town Council to draft decision capturing the board's discussion and vote and authorize the town manager to sign said decision and send notice of the decision to the ABCC and the licensee as required under chapter one thirty-eight of the general law.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. So we look forward to seeing you again. We know that you're in business. And we look forward to seeing a corporate structure that can work for the town and support the operation of a license, if that's what it is to be. Okay.
Understood. I, I hear the board loud and clear.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That means, brings us to the next item. Actually, it brings us to the town manager. Is that where, where I am?
Yes.
Yes, the town manager's report. That's what this is. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask Miles Tucker to talk about the outdoor space use.
Evening, Madam Chair.
Miles, you're going to get us all organized on all these new things. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to do it. So this is the second look that this board is seeing for the outdoor space use permits. So I dropped last time, received feedback. And the one change made based on this board's feedback was to remove a provision for one-day special licenses for alcohol on these four spaces. Everything else, as well as to remove the words, serve or provide food or beverage in the bullet above that, since it would all be provided, these being free and open to the public events. And I'm, and we fixed a typo as well in the insurance liability amounts, second bullet, section three.
Madam Chair, I would note that it made a lot of sense to not include the notion of serving alcohol in this, but if there was some event, the bylaw would allow it, but it makes perfect sense not to necessarily encourage it in this case.
And after covering those, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the board may have.
Are there any questions? This was something we discussed previously. I noted, it's the first time for Ms. Dow getting a chance to look at this, but with all of our revamped outdoor spaces, especially this one, we expect them to be in demand. So we wanted to be clear about what our policies are.
This is great.
I just, if I may, ask a question just about displays. I know that our bylaw prevents unattended displays that are not owned by the town. So a participant comes and brings something. They can't leave it there overnight. I guess I'm just wondering, is there, because we have had things on the town green overnight. So how, how do those two things go together? How can we?
Can you give me an example?
Well, the League of Women Voters had their. Well, the League of Women Voters had their art display.
They donated them to us.
They donated them to the town. So that would be something that people could consider if they wanted to have.
And people can always attend a display.
And they can attend.
I mean, a one person doesn't need a permit. They could stand there overnight. I, yeah, we don't have, I I don't believe we have a overnight standing bylaw.
Weird. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If there are no questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I motion that the board vote to adopt the select board policy SB L I C dash zero zero two, outdoor space use permits.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I know that's another one of the board's goals.
That is another.
Miles has completed.
We are just checking them off. Yep.
And the next one is alcohol. You want to take that, start that one too?
Sure do. So we're back with another version of the alcohol regulations, again, for discussion only this time. This incorporates some feedback from the last discussion this board had, as well as incorporating one additional new change after discussion with staff. So the first change is in section three point five point one three. And that included some language in the requesting proof of identification and using the scanner, and that would mandate it instead of for every sale for any patron appearing to be under the age of forty. And that was after input from this board. Additional changes are, the one that was discussed and included after discussion with staff was in section eight point four point five. This is related to food stores and section fifteen package store licenses. Right now, food stores, per this proposed regulation and per the current regulation, are limited to wine and malts licenses only. This would exempt this section of wine and malt to apply for farm stands. So farm stands would be able to have all alcoholic section fifteen package store licenses. It would exempt them vice groceries, other grocery stores or food stores.
In the farm stand would be.
Yeah, it's as defined by three thirty, basically by Commonwealth Regulation. That reference three thirty C M R twenty-two dash oh two.
Thanks.
Could I interrupt there for one second, just to note that a few years ago, the board discussed this in the context of what was then the final all alcohol license to be distributed. And now that the voters have essentially provided another one, we thought that might might happen. The board had said, well, they wanted us to think about that and and we hadn't, because we had no licenses available. And so these things came together. And it's actually the reason to discuss with you tonight that we didn't put the vote on, because we wanted to make sure that that's still something the board, which has had significant turnover, wanted to continue. So and then there's one, there's two more, right, that year?
Yes.
And I would, things that make a farm stand, I'm not remembering, but as I recall, it was things like, you know, at least five acres under being farmed and that there were several characteristics that relate to a farm stand and a certain amount of the produce comes from their own fields, that type of thing, define a a farm stand in what otherwise might look like a food store. There's some separate and distinct characteristics.
That's right. Okay.
Additional changes are related to the violation section, section ten. Section ten point two has one minor edit, which is moving up what was previously at the bottom below the chart up to the top. That is just a stylistic change, as well as the substantive change in the third offense was ten to thirty days here. And it also does let highlights the fact that the board shall consider all the all the circumstances when giving these suspensions, but does list those changes there, as well as the compliance check language here. It makes a change that the dates of suspension will be determined by the select board and that suspensions of more than one day will be served consecutively. That is new language based on the sports comments. Additionally, we basically truncated the suspense schedule from five to four suspenses, four offenses before you hit the maximum. So we reduced that runway. We also made the first offense a one to two day suspension. Again, recommended, the board does have flexibility on this, and it goes up to the fourth suspense, which is a minimum of ten days. We did confirm there is significant case law that would effectively put the board at risk if it tried to revoke a license for compliance check failures. That would likely not stand review. So that is why I know this board discussed that as last time. That's why it does not go up to revocation for compliance check failures, because that's that would likely not stand under appeal. So it goes up to that thirty day limit and it also, per this board's recommendation, removes the bottom level suspenses from, excuse me, offense penalties from them. So instead of a one to two day suspension, or excuse me, rather, a three to five day suspension, number two is up to a five day suspension and then up to a ten day suspension and a minimum of ten days. So we pegged those to the right for everything but the final offense, which would then be penalized at a minimum of ten based on the circumstances. And the final trainings here, again, based on board comment section ten point four, it includes the mandated training after a failure, not just the employee, but would be the in-store manager at the time of the violation as determined by the manager of record. And that would have to be, they would they would not be allowed to serve alcohol until they completed a training and that could be online. And then they would also have to attend an in-person training, which, as we've discussed, have, there's there's additional value added to that no later than the first one offered by the town. So they would still be able to go ahead and say Dedham offers one a month later, whereas Needham may not have one for four months. They can go ahead and knock out that requirement that next month if they'd like to, but they can't wait after the town's already offered one. They have to take us up on the first offer for the in-person training. But to prevent to understand the business's perspective, if there's not an in-person training for several months, this would allow that employee to get back to work selling alcohol after they've completed the online training, which, I mean, you can do immediately. And that would help rectify that aspect of it. And the training would need to be provided to the town. So we need proof of that.
I'm just thinking as you're saying that and in theory, somebody could be hired the day before a town training and then be stuck. I think I I need to read this language more closely.
This would be upon a failure.
Upon a failure.
Upon a failure. So an employee, when they're hired, they can take the online training. That's that's a requirement.
Okay.
The managers need to have an in-person training before they come in. So that's a requirement for employment. But if there is a failure, that employee would need to come in for in-person training at first offering.
Yep.
But that may not be for a first month. So after that failure, the employee could the next day come in and redo their tip certification, provide that certification to the town, and then they would be cleared to
work again.
Work again. And then when the town offers training or at any point in time earlier and another municipality offers that training, they'd be able to go ahead and do the in-person as well, mandated to do the in-person.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question, Miles. You do wonder, you are much appreciated. Going back to ten point two, when I see the the offense is going to four offenses, that still seems too high for me. That's me personally. So I'm I'm looking at the one offense possibly doing maybe like a three to five is what I was thinking. And then the second offense, instead of six to ten, and the third being ten to thirty, I feel like the third one should be the the final blow. And then the second one should be a little bit more intense. I think after one, one is too many to begin with. So even if we made that closer to the first one being three to five, the second one being closer to thirty and the third being it. And maybe talking to me a little more about that, why we wouldn't be able to do that if so, or any questions or concern the board have with taking that a little bit more serious.
Which which one are you talking about?
Ten point two.
Ten point two. So violations with the license, not compliance.
Compliance, we can't. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no option there.
How much case law is here? I'm I'm presuming there's a lot, because I think this looks like a lot of the other towns' charts that I've seen that have revocation at four. So I'm Yep. I'm just guessing there's case law involved in that question.
There is, and I'm afraid I can't speak to it myself. We've had someone else in the office helping assist with these. But I can say that all of these recommended violations are usually based on what the ABCC will uphold if there is an appeal.
Okay. So.
So that would say that we would be staying with what's there.
What's there now, but it's still up to our discretion within that one to five or the six to ten or the ten to thirty.
So where we choose to go within that range is up to us. Okay. We could certainly change that, except I don't think we want to say up to ten on the second, because there is some element of it needs to be sufficiently. So I think the ranges are probably good.
And through the chair, that second sentence in ten point two, the board and its discretion also may impose an order that is more lenient or more severe than suggested in the guidelines based on the facts surrounding the individual case.
All right, great. Yep.
Thank you.
And I presume if it was completely egregious, we could certainly revoke and then if somebody wants to appeal it, they'll appeal and we'll deal with it then.
Yeah. Thank you.
So.
Clarification.
Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Chair, on ten point three, the compliance checks. Nobody think you were paying them to the right. But what we for like first offense, wouldn't you say rather that two day suspension or down to one if circumstances? Do we say second offense would be five day suspension or down to if circumstances? Do we peg it that way or we say, because here sounds like we're talking ourselves up to was one, but maybe it'll be two. But aren't we saying it's two and maybe we'll go down to one? I'm not sure what we were saying.
So previously, the first offense was written warning. So we are moving
Okay.
Okay, to actually having it be something if we were to go within the suggest, these again are suggested guidelines. So I'm sure that the board will be involved in discussing them relative to what's happened.
It sounds like it could be a situation where negotiating against ourselves, whereas up to five days, it's like, well, all right, we won't do five, we'll do three. But do we say we'll do five and now we can negotiate down, which I don't have a problem doing? But it's up to you.
I'm sort of a six, one half a dozen of the other. I think this is a little bit cleaner, but would be my view.
Yeah. Yep. And then the other question I had is for the people who have already had violations, they're going to be hold to these standards once they're changed. So if they already had one, when they get the second, whatever the new language is, is what could be. I just want to be sure that they know that. And and I know we will get that out. Correct.
Yeah, for the violations.
Okay, thank you.
We we will absolutely get this out once they're voted to.
Right, right.
Everybody so that they understand the changes.
I would just say to Kevin's point, I'm okay with this language, so long as we all understand and and the and the license holders understand that the way it's written is the way we get to play it. So if the circumstances surrounding it dictate to us, then we can go with the two day suspension on the first defense or what what have you. I mean, it's it is written there, so just depends how tough we want to be.
So when they get to the second offense and they come in with the vertical ID and they haven't checked anything.
Send them out there.
We're capable to say five days. There you go.
I think it's important to note as well that one of the things that Miles and I were talking about is that with the board's request to include the scanner requirement, the failing to use the scanner would be a violation of the of under ten point two. And then there would also be a violation of ten point three. So there there could be, you know, more than more than one penalty for the same incident if if not using the scanner, obviously, somebody who's mostly a vertical ID is going to look under forty.
Yeah. And it takes a lot of discretion out of the equation too. So it seems like it would.
That was the intent.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, hopefully, there would be fewer of these just because of the scanner use.
That would be that would be ideal.
Any other questions? Any other things that we think we might need to tweak? Or are we, we'll consider it for the next two weeks and then bring it back for a vote at our next meeting, given the changes now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now we are on that rapid fire segment called Positions on Warrant Articles.
We forgot.
We now.
Need to let Dave talk about stormwater fees.
Oh, do I not have, I just downloaded this.
Right after the.
It's just not in the bookmarks, apparently, which is what I'm reading right now. Okay.
Dave, do you want to make any introductory remarks specifically about the tier one?
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. The proposal that before you was adjusted based upon public input that the board received, both at the public hearing and from the public at large. And what is before you is for properties that have a de minimis amount of coverage of impervious coverage, property of less than two hundred square feet would not be assessed a fee. That would certainly deal with issues of of a small unintended area that would be on the property that prob that that was overlooked and would be removed. And certainly for properties that have no impervious area that that they would not be assessed a fee. The second thing is we made it clear what the fee actually is in terms of the annual fee is billed on a quarterly basis or on a monthly basis, depending upon the type of utility account the individual has. That means whether they build quarterly, which most residents are, or they're built monthly, which most commercial properties are. The other thing the suggestive motion does is to authorize the town manager to adjust bills that are incorrect, or there was an incorrect assessment, or there was an error in determining the impervious area. So an example of a billing amount that would be incorrect would be if a person was slotted in the wrong tier. The in that was identified, the town manager would be authorized to adjust the bill to the proper tier. Or if a credit wasn't applied, the town manager could authorize that credit to be applied. An error in terms of calculating the impervious area, what, how would that happen? There would be an example, for instance, there's a deck, but the but the ground underneath is pervious, or there is property or part of the property is subject to an easement, which is not within the property owner's control, and therefore there would be an adjustment. Identification of a property owner invoiced an error, for instance, the wrong, there was a change of ownership and we and we built the incorrect person. So those would be the three types of exceptions that you would authorize the town manager to abate upon the recommendation of the Director of Public Works. And of course, there'll be an application process for all that documentation. I'm happy to accept any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Any questions?
I would just say that I appreciate, you know, having the public input and having that help kind of make changes and things and valuing what the people are saying and coming back with this recommendation and appreciate all your work, Dave.
May I say just one thing? I just wanted to remind those who might be watching that these stormwater fees are intended to cover new capital expenses that the town is experiencing. This is not to cover maintenance. It's not to cover the services that we already have. This is going directly to state mandated capital expenses. I think that's an important distinction.
Actually federally mandated.
Federally mandated, excuse me. Thank you.
It goes up to way high levels.
Yes.
This this was something that we had a public hearing on at our last meeting, if I'm remembering which meeting it was at, because it is new and and wanted to have the ability to do that. And these dollars, as Mr. Davison indicated, are really aimed at the capital piece of the projects, right? There are many. There are many more things that we're going to need to do for stormwater over time. And we will have to continue to work to figure out how we're funding them in the town. So all of that is still to come. Okay. If there are no further questions, then we have a suggested motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board adopt the revised schedule for the community stormwater mitigation assessments identified in the schedule below and that they be effective January 1, 2024. Further, that the town manager is authorized to abate and or adjust the fee upon the recommendation of the Director of Public Works with supporting documents if, one, there was an error in the billing amount, two, there was an error in calculating the pervious area, and three, the identification of the property owner was invoiced in error, or four, other similar circumstances.
Second. Great. Any further questions? Moving to the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Now. Now we're rapid fire.
Madam Chair, as is the board's custom, we would walk through the articles and the board would take positions or ask for additional information. I do note that our newest member will be recusing herself from anything with respect to the Needham Public Schools. So when we get to that, I would ask the board, I could just tell you now, Ms. Dowd and I have identified numbers, articles in the annual as five, 12, 16, 25, 27, and 33 as in some way.
Twenty five.
Sorry. Five, 12, 16.
That was quick.
Twenty five, twenty seven, thirty three. You write the moderator reads them much more slowly. I see now why. And so if those could be moved to the end, then Ms. Dowd need not get up and down.
And are there any in the special?
No.
Okay. All right. Then Ms. Fitzpatrick, if you, so we will start with Article One.
So Article One and Two need no vote. So Article Three.
Article Three. And usually what would happen here is somebody from the board could make a motion to adopt or a motion to not adopt. So. So that's the question that's in front of the select board right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, sorry, motion that the board vote to support or adopt Article Three in the annual town meeting warrant and.
Article Three is enough.
Okay.
Just.
All right.
We're good.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Article Four. Needing Property Tax Assistance Program.
Madam Chair, I move the board move to support Article Four, vote to support Article Four.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Adopt. We're going to skip Article Five. We'll go to Article Six, Appropriate for the Small Repair Grant Program.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to adopt Article Six.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We adopt. Article Seven, Appropriate for the Compensated Absences Fund.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to adopt Article Seven.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero.
Madam Chair, I've moved that the board vote to approve Article Eight.
Second then.
Madam Chair, I note that since the printing of the warrant, the Finance Committee has recommended adoption of Article Eight.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Right. Article Nine. Move we vote to approve Article Nine.
Second then.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopt.
I note the same for Article Nine, Madam Chair.
That adopted at the last meeting, right? Recommended adoption. Article Ten, Appropriate for the Town Own Land Surveys.
Move we vote to approve Article Ten.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Article Eleven, Appropriate for Fleet Refurbishment. I think this may be the one that.
No, it's not. It's in the capital. It was a line item. Yeah.
Okay.
Fleet refurbishment. Anybody move to adopt?
Madam Chair, I move that we vote to adopt Article Eleven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopt. Five zero. Moving to Article Thirteen, Appropriate for the FY24 Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to adopt Article Thirteen.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Article Fourteen, Appropriate for the FY24 Water Enterprise Fund Budget.
Move we vote to adopt Article Fourteen.
Second then.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article Fifteen, Authorized to Expend State Funds for Public Ways.
Move we vote to approve Article Fifteen.
Second then.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We adopt. We'll move to Article Seventeen. amend the zoning bylaw, accessory three car garage use, single residence B. Finance Committee did not take a position. We will need to take a position. So we need a motion and then we can discuss.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the board vote not to support Article Seventeen.
Second.
Okay, discussion? I guess we don't have the people here to answer this question, but they had raised the issue of this EPA spending time on this. And I guess I would be interested to know what what's being held up by this discussion, how much time it's taking, you know, what is the, what is kind of the opportunity cost of having these discussions about the three car garages since this EPA had.
So they, I'm not going to do it justice probably, but at their hearing, there was a fairly extensive discussion about this on John Schneider's part, where he did talk about often these end up being more than one hearing. The petitioner, the resident, has to hire a lawyer to prepare the appeal. So there's expense in their part, both and then expense on the parts of any both hearings that they might be at. And there's also delay in time and costs and whatever that means relative to construction. So all of those things.
Madam Chair, may I just ask, as a resident, I have been before the ZBA and I did not engage a lawyer to assist me with that application. So I guess I'm just curious if one must hire a lawyer and incur the extra expense, or if one does hire a lawyer and incur the extra expense for this. Because I think that's an important distinction. If people can do it by themselves, you know, they're making that choice.
I think it's probably one does, and maybe Mr. Heep can correct me. I don't think there's a requirement that there be a lawyer involved. I think it often occurs, but I think.
I would just say that as we've heard, most of these applications are approved. So it's, it seems to me that the burden of hiring a lawyer is maybe not one that must be undertaken. So I'm not sure that's a reason to, you know, to not move forward.
Okay.
So up to town meeting.
It's up to town meeting.
Okay.
I intend to vote to support this one based on the discussions that I've heard from.
So you're voting, I sense it's in the negative, you're voting.
I would vote, you voted not to adopt. I would be willing to vote to adopt. So I will be opposed, I guess, to the measure. Yes. Just to say, but the select board will take the position the select board takes. So that's fine.
Okay, so as you know, I oppose this article. But now, but I do see your point about bringing it to town meeting and letting them decide.
This board is able to take a position that is in opposition. That's possible.
But it'll still be presented.
It will be presented.
Okay, yes, it will be presented.
All right, just just making sure. All right. Well, I would second your motion then, Kevin.
Oh, you already did. I think it's been seconded.
Are there any further points of discussion? Are we ready to vote in favor of the motion not to adopt Article Seventeen? So all in favor of not adopting? Aye. Any opposed to not adopting? That would be me. So for one, we are going to not adopt.
We're not support.
Not support, whatever we want to call it. Yes. Okay. All right. Zoning by law, Article Eighteen, Accessory Dwelling Units.
Madam Chair, I'd move the board vote to support Article Eighteen.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We adopt. Article Nineteen, Corrective Zoning Amendments.
Madam Chair, I'd move the board vote to support Article Nineteen.
Second then.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Adopt. Article Twenty, Single Residence B and General Residence Side Setback.
Madam Chair, move the board vote to support Article Twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Article Twenty One, Appropriate to Community Preservation Fund.
Move the board's vote to support Article Twenty One.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. And the next one is Article Twenty Two, Appropriate to Community Preservation Fund Supplement.
Madam Chair, I move that the board, the board vote to adopt Article Twenty Two.
And a second?
Second. Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article Twenty Three, Appropriate for Needham Housing Authority Seabeds Cook Preservation.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article Twenty Three.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article Twenty Four, Appropriate for Defazio Playground Design.
Madam Chair, I move that the board, the board vote to adopt Article Twenty Four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adopt. Five zero. Article Twenty Six, Appropriate, Appropriate for Fire Ladder Truck.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article.
Article Twenty Six.
Twenty Six in the annual town meeting warrant and vote to support. Oh, I already said that. Article Twenty Six. No, that's it.
You're good. You're good.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Article Twenty Eight, Appropriate for Quiet Zone.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article Twenty Eight.
Second.
Second. Okay.
The, I do want to let people know that the Finance Committee has not taken a position on this one yet. They are planning to discuss at their next meeting. It says recommendation at town meeting, but I think they said they would talk about it at their next meeting was what I recalled. Among the questions that we've been asked are what's going on with the lawsuit that has been in the Boston Globe. The lawsuit in certainly introduces some uncertainty and the question is, would the town be spending money that then could not actually be used for a quiet zone? I think we continue to try to learn more about that lawsuit. The initial feedback seems to be that perhaps it's not the strongest case. But, you know, everything's uncertain, you know, and there's no decision on it and it's open and pending. We can certainly say that's the case. I think from my perspective, this board has heard a tremendous amount of feedback from the community in support of this particular effort. And I think the community would like the chance to speak on it. So that's my view.
I agree with you.
Did I give anybody a chance to actually make a motion? I lost track.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there other, other discussion or thoughts on this? Then coming into the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We adopt. Article Twenty Nine, Appropriate for Public Works Infrastructure.
I move the vote, the board vote to support Article Twenty Nine.
Second then.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We adopt. Article Thirty, Appropriate for Sewer Enterprise Fund Cash Capital.
Madam Chair, I move that the board support Article Thirty.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in, oh.
I just know that I do believe that this is one of the questions that the resident had asked about under the fleet replacement. The SUV hybrid.
Oh, correct.
Oh. There are, thank you. Good catch.
That's in the sewer.
It's in the sewer. There are, there, it's in many, but you didn't take it up in the cash capital because it's one of the recusals.
Right.
So my suggestion is that the board approves the article. We can bring you back more information. That on many occasions, we've, this is the suggested replacement. On many occasions, we've gone and we haven't even been able to buy that replacement. So we can make a presentation to you, we'll do some more research before the next meeting and we could talk about whether, whether, I mean, there's valid reasons we believe they're in here, but whether the board wants to pivot, we could look at that, too. So, but I don't think it, the board needs to not vote the article because the intent is to replace obviously the, the old piece of equipment. But with the, with the understanding that we would provide you with either information that would support your agreement with the SUVs or pivoting on whether we could afford within the amounts, because we don't intend to amend the amounts, whether we could afford.
So that's what I was going to say. The real question is whether within the amount that's budgeted per vehicle that needs to be replaced, right? We must replace those vehicles. That is what we're intending to do. Can we do that with a electric vehicle?
Right.
That meets the need that's been identified.
We could certainly explore it, although there are operational reasons why some of these are proposed for SUVs and not for some of the smaller sedan electric vehicles that are being used in other communities. But we just need a little more time on.
So I think it's reasonable to understand that. It still means that we could adopt so we can continue to move forward.
And we'll absolutely.
An overall cap.
At your next meet.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Likewise, Article Thirty One. Appropriate for the Water Enterprise Fund Cash Capital.
Madam Chair, I move the select board vote to support Article Thirty One.
And a second? Any questions? Friends getting tired. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adopt. Five zero. All right. Article Thirty Two, moving on. Appropriate for Water System Distribution Improvements on South Street.
Madam Chair, I. Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article thirty-two.
Indeed, second.
Indeed, okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt. I like indeed.
Yeah, yeah.
Article thirty-four, for appropriate to athletic facility improvement fund.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board support Article thirty-four.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article thirty-five, the stormwater stabilization fund, you'll remember, we just voted a fee. Now, the goal would be that we have a fund that can collect those fees so they can be dedicated to the purpose of stormwater and not mixed with general funds.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article thirty-five.
Second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt. The next item is the Town Hall Saturday Hours, Article thirty-six, I'm actually going to recommend that we hold on that one for tonight, we received some information this afternoon from the town clerk. I haven't even had a chance to read it yet, I don't think we've gotten it sent to everybody, it came in late this afternoon. And so just so that people have a chance to read it and understand the potential issues or not relative to this, I think we will vote it and take a position at our next meeting. We can come back to it, okay? Article thirty-seven, amend general bylaws, noncriminal dispositions.
Madam Chair, I move the select board vote to support Article thirty-seven.
Second.
I note this is one of our favorite new charts. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Madam Chair, on Article thirty-seven, we will have a motion to amend to present to you to fix a technical error that we found in the chart.
Yeah.
Yes. Article thirty-eight, amend general bylaws, Transportation Committee.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article thirty-eight.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt. Article thirty-nine, citizens petition.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article thirty-nine.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt.
It was a very good song they sang.
It was a good song, I think we should have recorded, did we record it? Did we manage to do that? Do I need George to record it, so? It's on Zoom, that's right, we can do that. Special Town Meeting. Article one and Special Town Meeting is to fund the collective bargaining agreement for the Needham Fire Union.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote.
I don't think we have that one with us, or do we?
You want to bring it up? I don't have any bookmarks, just hang on a second.
Hang on.
I don't need it. They can share.
You see it? I can.
Marcus and I can share if you have an extra copy.
Yeah, no, I got it, I got it, yeah.
I can give, you can send it down to Heidi.
Thank you, sorry.
Alright.
I was gonna say, I just found it here too, if somebody wants it. So Article one is the collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article two is the home rule petition to exempt the fire department from civil service.
Madam Chair, I move the select board vote to support Article two.
A second then.
Alright, and this is just as a reminder for people who are following this from home, exactly the route that we did with the police a year ago. We voted a home rule petition, which we will send to the legislature. If we are so fortunate that they act on it, then we will be able to leave a civil service, if they choose not to act, then we will bring this back at the ballot next spring, just like we did yesterday with the police. Thank you to the voters of Needham for letting the police leave civil service. I think that will benefit the town, that's our expectation and we look forward to that, so same deal. Any other questions related to this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, we adopt.
Under Article three, Madam Chair, the, the transfer from the reserve fund to the classification performance settlements is ninety thousand dollars needed to fund the collective bargaining agreement. Finance Committee has not taken this up yet. So probably best that you wait.
Okay.
It's, given that it's their article.
Alright. Okay.
Otherwise, yeah.
Fine, that works. Appropriate to the capital improvement fund.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article four.
Second.
And, and I'm looking at this, Kate, there's no reason for any of the rest of these why we can't take them up, or is there something that we shouldn't be?
Yes, I would recommend the board hold, I apologize, I was
just looking at the annual.
Yeah, so four, five, six, and seven, we haven't made a recommendation yet on the amount, and we're working, we'll be working with the board and the Finance Committee, so I would hold on those.
Okay, so let's, could we withdraw the motion? Would, would that be possible? Alright.
No amount in there yet.
We will wait on four, five, six, and seven. The last, the next article here is Article eight. Amend the town charter with respect to the personnel board.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article eight.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Article nine, amend the general bylaw for the personnel board. Comes in two parts.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article nine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt. Article ten, public educational and government PEG access and cable-related fund acceptance.
Madam Chair, I move the, the select board vote to support Article ten.
And a second?
Second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, actually, this one I'll point out. I never heard of section fifty-three F in three quarters.
Is it like, how?
Is this, it's real, right?
It's like platform and three quarters.
They never renumber, they never renumber, they just keep fraction.
Wiggling in.
Alright, I understand lawyer ways.
Alright. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, adopt. Article eleven, appropriate for public educational and government PEG programming.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article eleven. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. Article twelve, establish opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Madam Chair, I've moved that the board vote to support Article twelve.
Second that.
And again, the purpose of this fund is so that the opioid settlement funds that come in can go to this stabilization fund and be dedicated for that purpose. And we'll have the ability to hold on to those funds for that purpose. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. And then lastly, Article thirteen, well, not lastly, lastly for this round, Article thirteen, appropriate to opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article thirteen.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adopt that. Great. Now, we can go back if we can excuse Ms. Dowd for a few moments. And the board can go back to Article five in the regular town meeting articles, that is the one to appropriate for public facilities maintenance.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to adopt Article five.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero, adopt. Article twelve, appropriate the FY twenty-four operating budget.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support Article twelve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adopt, four zero. Article sixteen, set the annual department revolving fund spending limits.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board votes to support Article sixteen.
Second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero. Article twenty-five. And I think this may also have some of the vehicles in it, the general fund cash capital.
Yes, so same, same holds for that.
Yes.
Okay.
More info on that.
Right. Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article twenty-five.
Second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero, adopt. Article twenty-seven, appropriate for rooftop unit replacement.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to adopt Article twenty-seven.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero, adopt. And Article thirty-three, rescind debt authorization.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board vote to support Article thirty-three.
We are always in favor of returning authorizations for debt. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero, to adopt. Alright. Ms. Dowd, if you can hear me, if you're off there.
Nothing special, right?
Come on down. We don't, we don't, nothing in the special.
Do anything.
Pardon me? No, we don't, the omnibus only comes if there's something that gets created for some reason in the meeting. So, nothing on that.
Madam Chair, I just had one, one other note for the board to give you a heads up, is that we have, we do expect that given the vote of the voters on the alcohol question two yesterday, that we will be receiving some, because it's immediately operative, we will be receiving some applications. So we have identified Tuesday, May ninth correct, as the date which we are asking if people are interested in, applicants are interested in applying so that the board could have all of them at once, because otherwise you could end up a situation where the first one in and somebody else could miss the deadline, because we have deadlines by which the board needs to act, so we would expect that you might have a session on the, on the ninth that involved one or more applications for that new alcohol license.
Great.
Just had a quick question, so they're, they're gonna be heard on the ninth, but all the decisions are being made on the ninth as well, or is it a way to hear them? We go through and then we, at the next meeting, we vote, just wanna I just wanted to know, okay, that, just wanted to make that clear and understand, thank you.
And we will know by whatever that day was, the, what's in front of us that night.
Yeah.
That is a night that is between two town meeting nights, so we'll be in the meeting all the time mode at that time, we generally try to keep the agenda for that meeting later, because it's town meeting season, so we'll see how this goes. Okay. Anything else, or is that everything? Alright, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion of the open meeting law complaint that the board received, or that, that I received. So we did receive an open meeting law complaint on April third, twenty twenty-three from Mr. Joseph Abruzzi. He has indicated that he anticipates or alleges that the select board improperly discussed the development agreement for the foster property outside of an open meeting. He also alleges that the select board failed to adequately discuss that agreement, that we failed to adequately discuss a letter dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three from private attorney Dan Hill and further failed to post Attorney Hill's letter on the town website. What I want to say is that the board denies this open meeting law complaint. When we met on February twenty-eighth, we had received the agreement the day before that. The board knew generally what was going to be in the agreement, because we had previously given a sample of a development agreement at town meeting time. And as we keep saying, the shape of the deal did not change as we were going through this whole process from last fall through to the February timeline when we were talking about it, but we had just received it the day before. Attorney Hill's letter came on that day of our meeting. And in fact, what the board chose to do that particular day was defer a vote so that everybody on the board would have time to fully review all of those documents. When we met again, we, you know, had some discussion that day before we voted to approve the document. The development agreement, the development agreement at this moment remains unsigned, as we previously indicated. But, but the board did approve it on that date and therefore, we're ready to work under that framework. We acknowledged certainly on the twenty-eighth and again on March sixth, when we met, that we had received Attorney Hill's letter, I believe all of us indicated that we had read it and considered it. In, in that letter, again, it included a number, as, as it would be characterized, a number of suggestions. Some of those suggestions in my reading of it, I knew to be inactionable, for example, just on the basis of things that I understood about the discussion or the negotiation, but certainly Attorney Hill wouldn't have known that, and so we certainly could have recommended them. But at any rate, so those things were considered and we voted that day and we moved forward. There's also, the complaint asked us to release the minutes of our executive sessions that were held on a series of dates. These executive sessions were held pursuant to exception six to discuss the town's acquisition of some or all of the Castle Farm property on Charles River Street. And they resulted in the development agreement and the purchases and sale agreement with Northland. At this time, we are currently lacking a binding purchase and sale agreement and assigned development agreement for the properties, so release of the minutes right now would be detrimental to our negotiating position and would defeat the purpose of the executive session, we remain hopeful that we will be able to negotiate and that a purchase and sale agreement will be agreed to again between the parties and that discussion may go forward again, so there's no reason at this point for releasing those minutes. We're not at a state that we could do that. I'm trying to think, was there anything else in here that I sort of needed to acknowledge? Who's asked? I think that, so one of the, one of the requests, I do want to be clear, was that we didn't publish Attorney Hill's letter on the town website. I want to be clear that under open meeting law, there's no requirement for us to publish on the town website documents that we do not choose to publish on the town website, they weren't required that we do that. There was also an allegation that, you know, we had violated open meeting law by not publishing the development agreement soon enough, so that people could review it. Under open meeting law, there's actually no requirement that packets be published at all on town websites. They need to be available to the board members for, for their consideration and deliberation. The fact that the town does publish this is a service that we give to town members, but it is not an obligation of the town under any open meeting law. Have I covered everything? I think I've covered everything. So, so I just wanted to let people know that what the complaint was, what it asked us for. So, so I just wanted to let people know that what the complaint was, what it asked us for. Um, and, and uh, we, at this point, I think we would want to ask Attorney Hill to respond to that complaint on our behalf, um, sort of documenting uh, our understanding of what the request was and that we do not see a violation uh, on open meeting law, um, based on our understanding of the facts. If that makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I move that the board authorize town council to prepare and submit a response to the open meeting law complaint.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Five zero. Uh, we will discuss the results of the two ballot questions.
I think we already did.
Thank you, Needham. Right. Uh, we, we expect to be moving forward responsibly. I know that uh, the, the top vote getter on the ballot was the request to leave civil service. Uh, I have thanked Dan Matthews for his many efforts to ensure that that one got over the finish line. I think he had called nearly everybody in town, I'm pretty sure. Um, and uh, we appreciate the concerns of the Board of Health as it relates to our alcohol licenses, and we will continue to keep that in mind as we consider uh, people who might be interested in those licenses. Any other observations or comments from fellow board members? Committee reports. I can't remember if we've had any board meetings since the last meeting.
Um, active part?
Yeah, the active recreation assets working group. Now that we're nearly done, I finally got that rolling off my tongue. Um, uh, we met last week. And um, did two things. Uh, the, the bulk of it was a public meeting at which many um, opinions were expressed uh, on the draft regulations, but before we got to that point, we actually um, changed our draft recommendations. Um, to include, to change the location of our recommendation for the skate park. Uh, active recreation park, um, that we had previously designated. Uh, previously, we had recommended that it be at Cricket, and we withdrew that recommendation and changed it to um, the quarry location, which is to anyone who's uh, listening and doesn't know where that is, it's, it's where they sell the Christmas trees at, at Claxton. Um, so the, the skate park would be up there, and then we would still at Claxton have the pickleball courts and all of the other amenities that we had previously recommended. Um, we sort of uh, moved everything into an active recreation destination. Um, uh, great plan that was compiled by one of our, our committee members. Um, and then presented that and then received public comment. So uh, we will be having our possibly final meeting uh, next week. Um, where we will just refine all of the recommendations uh, so that we can move forward with some of these exciting projects.
That would be exciting. A lot of people have been hoping for things like this for a long time, so glad to hear. Um, usually we might be reporting on climate action planning committee, but we're meeting tomorrow night, so it hasn't happened yet. Alright, no other committees, I think, right now, and if that's the case, I believe we might be able to have a motion to adjourn. Have I missed something else? I think we're good.
We just a shout out to Miles Tucker, who's running the Boston Marathon.
Oh, that is such a great, awesome idea. Miles, you have to be looking for the sign.
Hi.
Very good. And, and um, I'd also just like to, well, first of all, welcome you back. And welcome Kathy. Um, and just to, I just feel like that point needs a little bit more emphasis than it maybe got in the very beginning of our meeting, which is this is the first time in history that we have three hundred and thirteen years women on this board. This is a majority female board. And prior to that, in case you were interested, um, when Marianne and I served together, it was the first time, two women.
No.
Nope.
It's not the first.
Oh, it's not? I've, no, I'm wrong.
That has happened.
Okay.
That has. Oh, that's right. And also Marsh Carlton and Sally Davis.
Oh, okay, well, I, I, I take it back, but none, still are only a twelve.
Still, we are nine, eleven, and twelve.
Yes.
So, so.
Not many. Um, it's a, it's a kind of a big deal.
Kind of a big deal.
Absolutely. Um, and with that, Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I was kind of hoping for an indeed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We are adjourned.